I will call this committee of the whole to order October the fifteenth. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. The first item is we want to actually shuffle the agenda a little bit in the interest. So we have Senator Rasmussen joining us by video this morning, and he has a meeting. So following up, so we're going to move the dairy property to item number one, and then we're going to add visit Fergus Falls contract termination to the agenda. Obviously, that'll become item number five. So the first item is the dairy property. And as obviously people know, the city slash port authority took over the dairy property some years ago and has done some demolition on the site to clean it up. And we've been working with the railroad. Currently, effectively, there is no real access to this property. And we've been working with Genesee Wyoming, and Senator Rasmussen has been very instrumental in those discussions. And we believe we are now at a point whereby we're going to get the best deal that we can out of the railroad. And the reason that Senator Rasmussen is on the line is because if you recall, we received a $4 million grant from the state to purchase the land for the trail, to develop the trail, and to fund the rail crossings. And as the funds technically expire 31st of 2026, we need to kind of make some decisions. And one of those decisions is ultimately, obviously, the funding for the crossings on the dairy property are covered. Essentially, the estimate was around 1.3 million for that, to come out that 4 million. But when you add and mess around with rail crossings, the railroad has an upper hand. And typically, for adding new crossings, they look for you to close at least three alternate crossings. And move one is also, they still want something in return. And what we have is a proposal from the railroad to do up signals on two other crossings and the bed on one crossing. And that would be adding lights, signal lights to South Union and upgrading the signals and the bed on Sheridan. And the estimate on that is somewhere in the region, again, of about that 1.3, 1.4 million. Technically, the state funds do not cover that fund, that cost. We've reached out to MinDOT Rail, and it would appear that at this point in time, there are no grant funds available to cover the cost of doing those upgrades. But what we would like to accomplish today is to have a resolution of intent that we would like to go ahead with the two crossings on the dairy property so we can get access to that land in order that it can be obviously developed and sold and become taxable property, and then figure out how we can pay for these other signals. And maybe, Jordan, would you like to just add a little bit about the caveat on that they would give us time to build those crossings?
Yes, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and appreciate the opportunity to join you virtually this morning. I'm down in St. Paul for some meetings. But this is a really important project for the future of Fergus Falls. I would say that this has been the result of, and Andrew can correct me, probably two years or more of conversations with the railroad as to how we can make sure that we can get this parcel, redeveloped, and utilize the capital investment dollars here in Fergus Falls. The important thing to note is the railroad under law can just basically say no to this, which is why they really do have the upper hand as we're looking at these different alternatives. I've spoken multiple times with very senior leaders at Genesee Wyoming, which is the parent railroad company, on this issue. And one of the opportunities that they have offered in principle is giving us additional time, up to five years, to complete some of these safety enhancements that they are asking for. And when you talk with their leadership team, they basically are trying to manage their liability. So by adding additional rail crossings, their insurance company themselves, they view that they're adding liability for them as a company, and they're effectively looking to try to see some liability offset with some safety enhancements at the two crossings that the mayor mentioned. And so that was kind of our, my last ask to them was giving the city of Fergus Falls giving us some more time to get those rail upgrades completed, which they are open to.
Thank you, Jordan. Andrew, did you have anything to add?
No, not related to the rail side of things.
Maybe you want to go to the mic.
Yeah, I think the mayor and Senator Rasmussen summed that up very well, where we're at in relation to the rail. We are trying to identify, and when I say we, I mean Bill, how we're getting, under what capacity we can bond for something like this to make these improvements, figuring out what the right avenue is to do that as it relates to infrastructure that's essentially owned by the rail that we are funding. Makes it a little bit different than the average city project. The other side of this, the dairy property in general, is the trail that is proposed to go through the dairy property. And that is also part of the $4 million that Senator Rasmussen secured for the city. And the timeline related to that, it's nearing final design at this point. Interstate engineering is working on that with the intent of going out for bid in winter, so early next year, and then construct in the summer of 2020, spring, summer of 2026. So that's in good motion. That'll come back before the city council when it's time to go out for bid, and then when we open bids, and continuing to get on a path where we can get these funds encumbered by the deadline of next year, like Senator Rasmussen and the mayor mentioned.
Thank you. So the goal would be to come up with obviously a resolution of intent that we would like to do this. Obviously, we'll push back to the tax levy committee on how we can fund it. Genesee Wyoming are suggesting that bids for next year will be competitive, and they equally suggested that we should bid it as alternates, that bid the two crossings that obviously we require to access the dairy property, and then the two safety upgrades, signal upgrades as kind of an alternate one and alternate two, so that if they are competitive, then we could look at doing them, but we would also then have to look to how we fund them. And then the other piece is, as Senator Rasmussen said, there's no guarantee that MinDOT will get funded, but if we can secure a five-year timeframe in which to do those crossings, you never know that there may be funding for that down the road. But today, that 27 acres is basically landlocked, essentially, and not accessible to do anything with. So with that, sort of questions?
Yeah, Your Honor, I appreciate it. I'm trying to come up to speed here in about five minutes. I know it's been a long process for people, so give me some grace if my questions are a little bit off. But how many rail cars travel through that dairy property a day, do we know, or a week or a month?
It's probably, I would say, you know, from anodally, around probably 40 trains, unit trains, a year.
That's what I thought, yeah. There's about 40 cars a year that are holding up the city for 27 acres through the dairy, or through the rail, which is unacceptable. The next question I have is, out of that 4 million from the state, and maybe Senator Rasmussen or Mr. Bremseth can help us with that, what amount of that are we knowing that we're going to spend? We've got 1.3 million on the rail crossings, we've got the trail. Are we tapped out on that 4 million, or where are we at with that, Mr. Bremseth?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Councilmember Mortensen, the first 1.2 million went from, went towards the transaction from the port authority to the city, and we used that 1.2 million to help fund the demolition project. So that's already been spent and received by the city. The 1.3 million is set aside for the rail crossings, as you mentioned. And then we have estimated about 800,000 for the construction of the trail through the site, and then any remaining dollars, and we tried to conservatively estimate all these numbers. Any remaining dollars, the way the legislation reads, is we can make any other public amenities on the site. So that can be parking lot for some of that green space parkland, it could be piers, it could be playgrounds, it could be starting the road per se for future development. So we have some flexibility there if there's dollars left over. But if you do the math, we're anticipating probably less than 400,000, 300 or less as it pertains to kind of those extras or discrepancies or whatever we want to, or discretionary spending on the site.
And when this bill, and maybe Senator Rasmussen can help, or you, Mr. Bremseth, when this bill went through the state legislature, did we know at that time that we would be pinned with this other 1.4 million in crossings at that time? And could have that been added into the bill? And could have it been worked in a way that we could have had that paid through the state? Or was it a no-go right from the start?
Well, I'll start, and then maybe Senator Rasmussen can finish. One thing I will say about state bonding dollars like this, more often than not, a large, probably 90-plus percent of them require a 50-50 match. So we would have been putting in $4 million to get $4 million. We worked with Senator Rasmussen and other legislators to try to utilize the monies that we spent on these phases locally as our quote-unquote "match," which is certainly an end-around as to how it's typically done. So no, we didn't know at the time exactly what the ask of the rail would be, but we probably anticipated there would be some expense beyond the 4 million, but it would certainly be less than what a typical project would be on a 50-50 match. Senator, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Mortensen. The $4 million typically under state law would require an additional $4 million match from the city of Fergus Falls to access that. In the bill that passed, we were able to get a waiver for that requirement, with the understanding that there would likely be some additional costs that would come along the way as the negotiations with the railroad continued. I would say, in many ways, landing at this outcome where there have to be additional safety upgrades made is much more favorable than having to close three rail crossings to get one and just some of the complexities that would have come along with that trade-off for people in Fergus Falls. And so I would say when the legislation originally passed in 2023, we didn't know exactly where the deal was going to kind of land with the railroad, but understanding that there'd be some additional infrastructure costs that would likely come along with this redevelopment. And that's one of the reasons that we waived the requirement for the full $4 million of matching from the city was to give some more flexibility.
And one more, I want to, I think your comments are spot-on, Senator. To be clear, the very first response we received from the railroad when it was, hey, we want to open two new crossings, was you're going to close six, right? And that's a staggering response, because you look through the city, and it's like, wait a second, that's going to shut down half the city, right? And then it was quickly explained, well, Buze for Broadway is just a swap, okay, we can live with that. And then it was, oh, it's three to one on St. Andrews. Well, we called Senator Rasmussen, and we're like, we need some horsepower on this because we just can't do that, right? I mean, that is, that's super disruptive to the community. And through those conversations, we've kind of landed here. Now, we've all talked, of course, we'd like to continue to chisel away at what the rail is going to require of us. They certainly have the ability to require what they are. And they have been flexible to us to an extent, and this is kind of where we landed with that. So from all conversations, it sounds like it's a take it or leave it, this is as good as it's going to get, and we just have to decide. And when you do a cost-benefit analysis on this, and the couple million that we've already sunk into the site, and the future economic opportunities, it kind of feels like we're, and in a lot of ways, Bill and I joke, that the decisions we make are because we have to do things, and it kind of feels like we're backed into that corner, unfortunately. But it was much worse at the beginning when these conversations were starting out, so.
I appreciate both your efforts and everybody that's been involved with it. One of the things that I think that I want to know, I know where we're at on the front end, what we need to do as a city, and we may have five years to do it. I just want to know on the back end, if we absolutely don't do this, let's say we don't do these rails, what is the penalty for that, or is that known at this time?
Your Honor, Councilmember Mortensen, basically, we wouldn't have the jurisdictions, the permissions to upgrade either Broadway or St. Andrews. So the only access we would have at that point in time to the dairy would be the existing access on Buze. So then we would have a trail constructed next year that went nowhere because we wouldn't be able to connect it outside of the site, because we wouldn't have any crossing jurisdiction on Broadway or St. Andrews, pedestrian or vehicular, and it would kind of be a one-way-in, one-way-out with no pedestrian dead-end sort of situation. And we would still need their permission to make improvements on the existing crossing because they control even entry into the right-of-way for construction activities.
Andrew, can I add something to that?
Sure, of course.
Great. So, Councilmember Mortensen, the other piece would happen as well is the bonds will cancel back to the state, and so the remaining balance on that $4 million will then be forfeited to the state if it's not encumbered or spent. And I would say, with the railroad here, they have the ability to say no, right? And then what'll end up happening is that 30 acres along the river that the city's been working to redevelop, I think, becomes much harder to redevelop if there isn't adequate rail crossings, which is what initiated the city pursuing this legislation in the first place, was getting additional support from the state to redevelop this really beautiful section along the Otter Tail River in Fergus Falls that right now is being, not being utilized.
Scott, one of you had a question?
Okay. A couple of things. If we are up against next year, do we need to go out for some bid alternatives on that 400,000 we anticipate to be out or identify? Or do we need to wait till bids come in to identify what the plan with that is? Would be one, and then I have a follow-up.
Your Honor, Councilmember Kilde, we'll need to wait and see where we land and get a good idea. We can quickly encumber the funds on things like that if we need to.
Okay. And then follow-up question. My definition of upgrades at Sheridan, and I think you said Union, might be different than others. What exactly will the people around, like on Sheridan, for example, see as different with their crossings?
Your Honor, Councilmember Kilde, Sheridan is obviously in really tough shape. If you've driven that crossing anytime in the recent future, that will be improving, like the mayor mentioned, the actual bedding of the rail. So the on-street crossing will be improved, it'll be a smooth crossing, and then it'll be an upgrade to the signals and the signal arms that are present at that site. The Union Avenue project is strictly related to upgrades of signals, and I don't know if, I don't know offhand if that's new arms or just new cabinets or what, but it's, the Union one is significantly less expensive because there's no street work related to that one.
So from a public inconvenience, Union would not have a whole lot, but Sheridan will.
Right.
I mean, they'll dig up the bed like they did on South Union. Scott, you had a question?
No, I did not.
Okay. Scott, I knew Scott had a question.
Yeah.
One to Scott.
Well, as we found with the recent work that MinDOT forced us to do on the four crossings downtown, sometimes these things come to us, and we really don't have a practical choice. And if we weren't to upgrade these crossings at Sheridan and Union now, when would we? Because it'll happen. You know, we're going to get back to this again, whether it had to do with the dairy property or not. So including this as essentially part of this package with the dairy and stuff, it makes sense. It's just not that, you know, it's not the order that we may be expected or predicted or would have chosen, but it's coming, and I think that we just have to figure out how we're going to make it happen.
Thank you. I don't know whether there's really any action this evening. We'll come back to the council with a resolution of intent of what we can or cannot do. And it was more that we need to get back to the railroad and secure the, you know, an agreement that we have at least one, you know, to do the crossings that we want to do in up to five years to do the signal and the safety improvements. So thank you, Senator Rasmussen. Have a good day in St. Paul. Keep working hard for Otter Tail County like you do. The next item on the agenda is a four-way stop pilot project on Court and Mill Street. And Andrew's got to do that one, not Guy.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, members. I'm here this morning on behalf of the Tax Levy Committee. That's where we're kind of, that's where this request is originating from. As you may or may not know, the way we're currently replacing traffic cabinets is through an annual $50,000 levy. We intended to do $50,000 a year for the next several years to get everything upgraded. And as the Tax Levy Committee continues to meet on a weekly basis as we charge ahead towards our final budget here in December, this is one area that we had some discussion on, that we could probably identify some current and/or future savings as it relates to the cost of maintaining traffic signals and traffic cabinets. One of the things we talked about is the potential for turning the two intersections at Lincoln and Mill and Lincoln and Court back to four-way stops as opposed to having signalized intersections at those two intersections. That would reduce the need to upgrade those two signals and would, you know, be $100,000 over the next few years. And quite frankly, it may improve the flow of traffic downtown as now you're sitting waiting for red lights, and if there's not a lot of traffic at a four-way stop, you stop and you proceed on your way. So as part of that discussion, the Tax Levy Committee thought it might be a good idea to just, on a pilot project or temporary basis, turn the signals to flashing reds, put a four-way stop out there, and then just see how that goes for the flow of traffic, for pedestrians. And then upon conclusion of a pilot project, we can speak with the downtown business owners, the general public, and get feedback as to whether or not they think that would be a wise change going forward. So I don't have terms of a pilot project defined per se. I know we're approaching November, it's not the best time of the year to start doing experiments. So as I was driving in this morning, I was thinking, you know, maybe we do it for a month yet this fall, pause it for the winter months, and then we kick it off in the spring, come back midsummer next year, and have a discussion as a council as to whether or not that's a permanent direction you want to go, or give direction to the Tax Levy Committee at that point in time, which would align perfectly with the following budget to continue funding these upgrades and improvements. So that's where we're coming from as a tax levy. We thought maybe it's an opportunity to kill two birds with one stone in terms of better traffic flow and also saving some money. So if anybody has any other thoughts from the committee, jump in.
Laura?
You explained it really well. That was where we started that conversation, for sure. And then, you know, the flow of traffic downtown, pedestrians crossing, all of that. So, yeah, I think that for a month timeframe to see yet this fall what that flow looks like would be extremely helpful for us moving forward.
And I think the goal, the thought was that on Lincoln, you know, you often see people racing to kind of get through the next light, you know, so this would be a means of kind of stopping, you know, stopping them every block. And those two intersections, you know, are kind of downtown, and obviously leaving the other ones open. And as Andrew said, this would save us $100,000 in upgrades on the signals over time, plus the maintenance costs, because it's not, you know, the signals also have a degree of maintenance cost. And it was just throwing it out there as to, this is a means for the city to save some money and hopefully increase the safety aspect of downtown. So any comments by people? Mike?
Yeah, I appreciate it, Your Honor. I'm usually pretty serious, and I will be today in parts of this. I didn't think I was so invested in the stoplights downtown, I really didn't. But, and I know Mr. Layton, I appreciate his ability to cut the budget in every way that he can in the committee, but I can't have the perception of the city thinking that we're cutting lights just to cut the budget. I can't have that, because I don't want the city to think, geez, now my lights are gone because of 50 grand. Because what this really is about is about public safety. That's what this is about. Is there a benefit to the city for doing this and going about this? And I don't know that answer it is today. But I started thinking, we have four-way stops on Washington Avenue, which is one block off, and I think one of the things that would be nice to look at is what is the traffic count on Lincoln compared to the traffic count on Washington? They can't be off that much, they might be a few thousand, but I bet, you know, one's 10,000 and one's 15,000. And if we haven't had a lot of crashes on Washington, maybe this works on Lincoln with it. But one of the things that I thought I'd do, just because research and different things are important to me, so I pulled up just a couple of things, and it said, "Removing streetlights and replacing traffic signals with four-way stops is a complex and highly scrutinized proposal with significant implications for safety, traffic flow, and cost. Traffic studies consistently show that eliminating streetlights drastically increases nighttime crashes, particularly for pedestrians, just because of the lower light in there." And so I had to take some pause. That's just coming from Google AI, it's not a big source, but it gave me some pause to say, what does the research say? So then I went just a little deeper into an accident analysis and prevention, and they really said there was no research on this to say, hey, a traffic light versus a stop sign is any better. And so it's an equal deal. The only thing that I have a concern about is with all of our other, probably four-way stops, even on Washington, there maybe isn't as much traffic parked along those roads. So I came down Lincoln this morning, and I thought, hey, if all the cars are in here and that stop sign's off to the side, will we have the visibility? So I think if we do do this, we have to have a little more visibility of that stop sign than just a regular stop sign there. Because, one, we're going to have our local grandma that's 60 years using the stoplights, it's going to be a big change for her, but we're also going to have our out-of-town individuals coming down Lincoln Avenue through the first stoplight, and they're not going to be really looking for that stop sign. So normally, I just thought this was perfect, but it gives me some pause, and I want us to kind of think about this. And I don't want the perception of the public thinking, hey, they need to cut 50 grand so they took the stoplights out. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Andy?
I appreciate my comrade. I don't believe we're changing the actual fixture. The stop-and-go light will just be as if it were blinking red.
It'll be flashing red.
Flashing red. So the structure stays the same, it's the timing, the guts that runs the stop-and-go light is where the savings are. So nothing changes other than the fact that when they're out of order, they just sit there and flash red and white. So is the traffic down on Lincoln?
And if there were something that went wrong with the signals in the future, we probably, in that scenario, wouldn't replace them, and then the flashing red would be gone. But, yeah, that would be the intent, as long as they're in place, we can flash them red.
I know we've talked about the cost of the pedestrian flashing light, like, for example, on Union by Spies Park, for the possibility of looking at that by Magnuson Park. If we were to take the lights out and go to a flashing pedestrian situation, because the infrastructure is there already, is that less costly to do in that location if we were to put the flashing pedestrian signals there versus upgrading the boxes if this looks like a good option?
I'll have to defer to either Public Works or PD if anybody, I don't know the answer to that question.
Or just something that we could keep in mind might be an option with concern about pedestrians.
Yeah, the cost to put those type of signals in, like you're saying at Spies, pretty minimal. I mean, there's a few thousand dollars, but compared to a full intersection?
Right, cheaper. So that might be an option. I guess my other thought would be, I don't think we should take the wiring or whatever is in the ground in case these ever have to get added back in. We don't want to do anything where, if we have to go back in in the future, it costs more to put the thing we had there already back.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Scott?
Do you need any kind of action to put this on the agenda for Monday night?
I think so.
Make a motion to that effect that we do this.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
I got a question, too. The public safety part of it, I know Mike was talking about that, that, you know, we can all admit that we always see that green light, or it's going to be, so we rush down to that end, not thinking, you know, and then you get there and you can't hit a stop, or you run a yellow or whatever. I kind of like the idea, and I'm just trying to think of different cities in the Midwest that have these. the Midwest that have these stop signs downtown and not stoplights. I think Walker is probably the, the one that I think of most, that's a busy, busy intersection, it's a stop sign there. So, I don't, I'm not sure, but I just, I think a pilot program would be the best.
I mean, and that's, the, the ask is to do a pilot program and then we can evaluate and if it's, if we see, and I think Mike's, and we'll get that traffic count if we can. But I think that's a good, a good, that would be a good, you know, comparison to make.
Your honor, one last thing, just in looking at this this morning and getting ready and preparing, there is multiple cities that are doing this, multiple, in all different areas of the nation. And it's kind of a, a trend that's occurring and I don't know why, but, so it wouldn't be a, you know, rarity to do it.
The other alternative is many roundabouts.
No. Can I have one other thing? I, I hear from business people downtown, they need better communication from the city. I know we don't have a communications person with that hat on right now. How do we communicate this? Most of our business owners aren't watching our city council meetings. How do we communicate this right now if we're going to start it for a month to them, give them the idea of, this is who I contact if I have feedback now or next spring? How do we lay this out so everyone on Main Street actually knows what's going on?
Yeah, your honor, Councilmember Kill, the two things come to mind, one, we'll work with the chamber and have them push out information, and two, we'll probably do a mailing to all of them. Clara may have a database already with a lot of downtown email addresses, or somebody does, Jean maybe, somebody has, because we pushed communications out with the mail and overlay project a couple of years ago. So we'll, we'll utilize that. We also could go door-to-door, that's.
That might be important on the alley side, especially where the work is done, because I have heard from business owners there, they're wondering when their pavement's coming. And so I feel like maybe we need to do some communication on that too.
Perfect. Kyle can kill two birds with one stone.
We did do something on that just recently. I, I put together a letter and we got together with the chamber and they were getting that sent out.
So that's coming.
Literally within the last couple of days.
Okay, so they're going to get something?
Yes.
Okay, good.
All right, so thank you. With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those again, same sign. Motion is approved, everybody good with the consent agenda for that item? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is surplus police squad. We'll call upon Police Chief Justin Paul, and he's supported this morning by Connor West, and the recommendation to the council is to declare Unit 2091 as surplus equipment and to authorize its disposal.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. I just wanted to give a little bit of kind of high-level overview on, you know, kind of our squads and everything. I always want to give credit to those that do the work, so, you know, it was Lieutenant West that kind of put this together. But just as I've kind of looked at things over the last month, you know, first off, we understand the expense that's involved in the purchasing and the outfitting of these squads, and it's just like everything gets more and more expensive every year. So just some of the observations, you know, your long-term investment in the police station allows us to park the cars inside, which significantly reduces the exposure and the risk. We are definitely good stewards of the resources that you provide us. Two officers share a squad car, and so there's a little bit of peer pressure to make sure that you are keeping the squad clean for your partner that takes the, that takes the car over after the shift. Very good about staying on track with the routine preventative maintenance. And two times a month, the squads are inspected, so kind of everything's pulled out and inspected and looked over. And we're also trying to do a good job of anticipating, you know, of course, the, the manufacturers of the vehicles, they change the dimensions, and then so your equipment doesn't, you know, fit in that new car. So, we're trying to, you know, really kind of look downstream on, you know, making sure that the equipment that we have in there today will work for the, the new squads that we, that we get. And then, you know, there's just some follow-up. The city that I previously worked at, we had an, we had an agreement with Enterprise and we leased our squads, and it kind of allowed for, you know, to, to take that cost instead of having that lump sum upfront cost and kind of spread it out over, over time. So that's something that, you know, certainly, you know, we would look into to see if that makes sense here or not. But, I'll let Lieutenant West talk unless you have specific questions for me, but I just want to at least give you my observations over the last month, and been very impressed with kind of the care that Fergus Falls Police Department takes of their squads.
Thank you, Justin.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. I do have to say I had a typo, so it is a 2020, not a 2019, so that we're accurate on the report that I provided, but it is a 2020 marked patrol vehicle, Squad 2091, it's a Tahoe. Currently has 91,000 miles on it, and most of the equipment that is in that squad is no longer compatible with the fleet vehicles that we are purchasing. Everything that is able to be used in the new squad car that we have will be, and then everything else at your discretion will be disposed of. So I'm requesting that Squad 2091 become surplus, and then the funds gained with that sale would be put back into the general fund or equipment fund.
Thank you. Would somebody care to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Laurel. Any discussions or questions of Connor?
Where does, where does a vehicle get sold, if you will? Does it go on a, a public auction, government auction?
Yes, we typically use an auction company out of New York Mills. Midwest Auction is typically who we utilize, so it goes, goes to a public auction.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those again, same sign. The motion is approved, everybody good with that on the consent agenda? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Housing Code Audit Presentation by Brene Kennedy on behalf of Greater Minnesota Housing Fund, and Clara Beck will do the introductions.
Yeah, I'm going to introduce Brene to you guys. So, good morning, council. We are very lucky to have Brene Kennedy with us this morning. She is a planner who's been working with the Greater Minnesota Housing Fund, represented by Nate Dorr here in the audience. So if you have questions about his organization, he'll be happy to answer those. But Greater Minnesota Housing Fund recognized a need in, in more rural communities and smaller communities to get some capacity building for things like housing development. So, they launched a capacity building program that has a planner on staff who will help communities identify barriers to housing in their zoning codes. This is an effort that the Planning Commission discussed back in June and voted to undertake. It's fully funded by Greater Minnesota Housing Funds, we're super grateful for that opportunity. But Brene took a look at our zoning code and she identified some areas where we could potentially make some changes. So we have some Planning Commission members in the audience today, they're going to be hearing this information with you this morning, with the goal of bringing all of this back to the Planning Commission to continue to discuss, and then hopefully in future, come back to the council with some suggested changes to our code. But without further ado, I'm going to have Brene come up.
Thank you. Good morning, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Thank, all right, okay, all right. Thank you Clara for the wonderful introduction, and thanks Nate for having me here too. We've been sort of doing a roadshow across Minnesota, so it's been really fun and inspiring to see the great work that's happening in the towns in, in Minnesota and the efforts towards making zoning codes more friendly for housing in particular. It looks like the font might be a little bit different, oops, might be a little bit different on this, so hopefully it doesn't mess up too much. So we're just going to start with why, of course. Why am I here? Why are we talking about this? I'll do a quick review of your zoning code and just give you kind of some insights that I have, and then some recommendations. And then we're going to take a little bit of time at the end to talk about tax base and the different uses you have in your community and how they impact tax base. So I think you'll maybe be a little, have some more insights and be a little surprised at some of the information at the end here. And then hopefully we'll have a little bit of time for questions. I know you are all business this morning, so maybe bear with me as we have a little bit of policy discussion.
We got time to ask questions.
There's a little bit of a delay, I think, so. Okay, so why are we talking about this? None of this is probably surprising to you as you look around your community, but, and these trends are true for all of Minnesota, including the Twin Cities. So again, you're not unique in these trends, but it's really important to point them out. Your population is aging, that might not be surprising to you, and most of the communities that we work in do not have the kinds of housing, the types of housing that seniors need. Your house and related, your household size is decreasing. So this is correlated to the aging population, but there's also increasing households of single person who are beyond seniors. And so people delaying family formation, divorce, all of these things play a factor in single-person households increase, increasing. It's also important to look at ways to grow your tax base. So, as you'll see it toward the end, housing, particularly housing that serves smaller households, is really a way to grow your tax base that's sort of not necessarily talked about as much as industrial and commercial development, although with trends in industrial and commercial development, we need to look towards housing as a way to grow our tax base. Housing, again, not surprising maybe to you, is getting harder and more expensive to build. There's a million factors associated with that, and we won't get into that today, but if you have questions, I'm happy to talk to you about, a little bit more about why that is. And so all of these combinations of things together, really now is the time to be doing zoning reform and to be doing other things to help advance housing as well. You'll just rotate them for me? Okay, thank you. Okay, so Otter Tail County did a housing needs assessment, which is the first step in sort of trying to figure out what to do at, at the public level as well as the private sector regarding housing. And there was a Southwest Otter Tail submarket evaluated, and it found that this submarket needs 115 new homes for new people coming into the, to the market, and 443 different homes for existing residents. This is very notable, and again, is consistent with the trends. Of these, most of them would need to be priced between 200 and 250,000 for, for owner occupied or sale, and then the equivalent rents to be affordable to your population demanding it. So there's a couple of different conclusions drawn in the report based on this. One is that one way to build units in the price range that is needed is to build smaller units. Again, maybe this is common sense, but I think is important to note. And then finally, removing some of these zoning and land use barriers is the critical first step. It's not going to solve the, all of the barriers to housing, but it's an important step, and most notably, it's the thing the city council can control. There's so many factors outside of the city council's control and zoning as given, and I think, as given authority by the state of Minnesota is one thing the cities have jurisdiction over. This is very notable. I would say, I, this is the first stat I actually look up when I look for data, and it's the percentage of single-person households in your, in your city. 43.8%, so that's the highest I've seen. I always look this up because it's a trend. The, the types of households that are growing are single-person in, across all communities that I've looked, looked at. The percentage of other households is decreasing, the percentage of single-person households is increasing, but this is the highest percentage I've seen yet, and so that's very notable to me. Next. And the types of housing you have is mismatched from the, the types of housing that single-person households need. You can see here, the left is owner occupied, the right is renter occupied. So while you have a larger percentage of smaller units in the rental category, you can see that no bedrooms, one bedrooms make up a small percentage of your total housing stock. Next slide. Okay, so that's just some sort of insight into the demographics of your community. Again, not uncommon, these are trends that are happening nationally, but for sure in the state, as I look them up for each city I go to. And so what do we do about it in terms of what the city can control in, in terms of zoning? So, these are the same five common barriers I present at every council, so these are the things I see unilaterally across communities, and there's a reason why these things are kind of very common, and it's because back when the state of Minnesota gave enabling legislation for zoning to communities, there were model ordinances put out, and most cities adopted those model ordinances. And so you'll find a lot of similarities across zoning in the cities. Certainly cities like Fergus Falls and other places who look at their zoning once in a while have made amendments and improvements over the years. Many cities have not done anything with their zoning code since the original adoption of it. And when we think about the goals we had in the 50s and 60s and 70s, and the households that we had in the 50s, 60s, and 70s, the zoning still largely reflects those values and those demographics. And so these are the top five I see in most communities. Lack of permission, just simply very restrictive zoning. Zoning that is, allows single, a few uses per zoning district, exclusive, meaning each zoning district has different uses that are allowed, and so commercial allows commercial, single-family allows single-family, and so on and so forth. Very kind of, it's called Euclidean, it was, you know, just kind of, you put a use in a district and that's what you allow, and you don't allow any other types of uses. So when we look at recommendations, we're going to be looking at broadening the amount, the types of uses in each district. The second is procedural barriers, so just the process by which you would go about making changes to the zoning or doing projects that are inconsistent with the zoning. These are, the procedural barriers put in place are intentional. We traditionally and historically have wanted to make it difficult for people to do development because we've wanted a large level of discretion and control over what happens in our communities. Not necessarily a bad thing, but it has resulted in a tight housing market. And again, not the only barrier, but a really important one to look at. The third one is parking requirements. I don't know, again, if you drive around your community and you look at how many empty parking lots there are, 99% of the time, you'll know we've overparked our communities. Parking is also expensive, so as you have requirements for parking stalls per square foot or per unit, that's adding to the cost of projects and resulting in a lot of big empty parking lots. The fourth one is dimensional standards. So these are things like lot width, depth, setbacks, height, hardcover or lot coverage requirements. Often communities have lot widths and depths that are bigger than what the existing development pattern is. And so if someone wanted to put in a house on a lot that is very consistent with the neighborhood, they wouldn't be able to because, or, or build or develop new lots consistent with the neighborhood, they would need to be bigger. Again, this is a common trend, 60, 70, 80-foot lots in a neighborhood that has 30, 40, 50-foot lots. And then finally, infrastructure costs, this is not a zoning issue, but it's very related to zoning because I think a lot of communities, as they look at adding housing, they look at the edges of town or the big vacant parcels, you know, acreage, and the cost to put infrastructure in is increasingly expensive and cost prohibitive to the, to the sales price of those homes. And so, and you just talked about it earlier with your dairy site, right? And that's, that's not even sewer-water roads, that's just crossings. So looking at how the infrastructure gets recouped in these, in the sales price of the homes, it's increasingly impossible to recoup those costs. So really looking at your existing infrastructure and where there are opportunities for infill is something you can do in your zoning code. Okay, so I, I talked a little bit about this. This is the zoning authority that is given to you by the state of Minnesota. There are discussions right now at the state level to limit this authority, and the reason is because there's, the housing advocates out there are advocating for taking away some of that control at the local level so that housing can be easier. It's very controversial, of course, the league and most city councils are not supportive of getting some of their zoning control taken away. So I just say this, not as a threat, but as an encouragement that you have the ability to make these changes yourself and proactively before, or, or before anyone tries to take that away from you. This is an example that the League of Minnesota Cities puts out, it's a graphic that I think is really helpful when we think about authority. When you're doing comprehensive planning or zoning code updates, you have a lot of authority and discretion over what you want your code to say, which is just said to encourage you that, you know, as you you that, you know, as you think about what you want in your community, you have the right to allow it. As you rezone things and you move up this review pyramid to do subdivision review or conditional use permits, you have less discretion in those decisions. And so setting the foundation for what you want in your community is a critical step, and gives, it gives you a lot of authority and discretion over what you want. So basically, you can say what you want in your community in the zoning code. This is your current zoning map. And as I reflect on it and compare it to the other zoning maps I've reviewed, you do, you do have some good amount of land zone for medium and high density, which is the kinds of housing that single households need more than any other type of demographic. And so one of the recommendations is related to really honing in on those areas of your city and whether they're already developed or whether they're available for development. So that's the context under which we're discussing your zoning map here. So with that, here are the recommendations based on a review of your zoning code and your zoning map. The setbacks that you have are currently very restrictive. Like I said, those dimensional standards really impede the ability to use existing lots for new single-family homes or any other types of housing. Same with your lot coverage and floor area ratios. As we look at those percentage restrictions, the recommendation would be to kind of reconsider those and see if they can match your existing development pattern, particularly in existing neighborhoods. Looking at the amount of land zone for medium and high density, because single-person households are your primary market for housing, especially your existing residents. Looking at where you could do projects that provide housing for single people, single-person households, would be in order. And like I said, you do have some land in those medium and high-density districts. But looking at whether they're developable and if the setbacks and floor area ratios and lot coverage is allowed development there. There are also procedural challenges in your code, and I'll get to the recommendations regarding that and a little bit more specifics on the next slide. And just in general info, and this isn't uncommon, but just kind of how, if a person wanted to try to do a housing project, where would they start? And putting more information on your website for process and applications and the zoning code itself, just having kind of a one-stop shop is also one of our recommendations. So with that, we've got a few here. Reexamine and adjust setbacks in R3 and R4. And one of the things about these recommendations is that they're, like, I'm trying to design them to be pretty easy from a procedural, from a tactical perspective, go to your code, make the changes. They're not easy politically, so I acknowledge that. And as we, as you bring zoning changes forward and redline your zoning code, having those discussions in a series of meetings is important. And answering questions that the public might have, the state statute requires that you do public hearings for zoning code text amendments. And so really bringing your community along, bringing the council along, this is the first step in sort of talking about, well, maybe not the first step, we've probably been talking about this for a while, but just designed to sort of be like, okay, this is, the next step would be to bring zoning code changes forward and how you do those public hearings and, you know, inform your public as well is important. The second recommendation is to make procedural requirements easier. Take away the things that aren't required by statute, and so that the process for doing housing is more streamlined. The third is to broaden the ability to use your planned unit development. So short of making a ton of zoning changes, one thing you could do is allow planned unit developments in, for more zoning districts, particularly for different residential uses. What a planned unit development does is it allows a housing project or a housing developer to come in and say, I don't want to meet the zoning, this is what I want to do instead. And you approve a development plan consistent with the, you approve basically their plan rather than requiring them to meet any of the zoning requirements. So that has been a tool used as an alternative to updating your zoning when you want to, when you want to allow kind of ideas or broader development patterns that aren't contemplated by the city code. The fourth is to evaluate your existing land and zoning that's on existing infrastructure. So looking at your city and where there might be infill sites. Again, the cost of infrastructure is becoming increasingly prohibitive to be able to pass those costs on to the units that you build. And so looking at where there's existing sewer, water, curb, gutter, sidewalk, internet, maybe even alleys. There are like 10 different items of infrastructure that have to be built when you do a greenfield. And so looking at where you have sites within your existing city, particularly that are zoned for R3 and R4. You have a Lincoln Avenue plan that you adopted a while ago. And so incorporating the zoning recommendations from that plan is also something, I sort of took a little bit to compare your existing zoning to your plan. And incorporating those plan recommendations is one thing you could also do to make your zoning code more friendly to the types of development that are demanded. And then finally, having the zoning with your parcel data from the county on your website. So just like a quick link to that. So those are the recommendation, the high-level recommendations. So this is not granular. This isn't intended to be a conversation about Section 150 1.25, but that would be the next, for example, that would be the next step here is to really look, kind of drill down into your code and say, here are the track changes that we want to bring forward for these purposes. And this is just, I just wanted to include the land use plan for your West Lincoln, in your West Lincoln Avenue Land Use and Zoning Study. So this does deal with the dairy site and kind of what the vision was for that site at that time. And then I'll pivot really quickly to just talk about some tax base implications to different types of development. So, and again, these findings, I've done this maybe six times now in six different cities evaluating the tax base by land use. And so there are some generalizations or findings that I've found consistent across the cities I've done this, which is that development in existing neighborhoods, particularly downtowns, consistently has the highest estimated market value per acre. So when we look about, look at the use of land and we look at the amount of infrastructure needed to develop certain types of uses, per acre estimated market value is the highest in your kind of most compact and historical neighborhoods. Market rate multifamily newer housing, so this would be market rate, notwithstanding any tax deductions for affordable, generally has the highest tax base, more tax base per acre than commercial or industrial. Again, we're looking at per acre. So at the end, they'll show you a summary of the total taxes generated by each use, which of course, commercial has generally more tax base, but the amount of land it requires, the amount of infrastructure requires is significantly more. And then I just wanted to make a note that this isn't like a full fiscal impact analysis where you would look at the cost of services or the costs of infrastructure or anything like that, but just to say straight tax base or estimated market value. And I'm just going to fly through these pretty quickly, I think. I looked at your Artist LaF Historic Rehab Project. This is an affordable project. The per acre tax is generated is $41,000. So the total taxes is $6,600, but because it's on a tiny little lot in the middle of the city, it's got a high per acre tax value. Next one. So, you know, standard commercial project generates $27,500 in taxes, and that's a total tax per acre of $42,000. A newer medium-density townhome project is, generates $50,000 annually in taxes, and that's a per acre tax of $17,000. River Bluff Apartments generates $61,000 in annual taxes, which is $11,000 per acre. And the Walmart generates $162,000 in annual taxes, which per acre is $9,000. So just to use this as an example, the amount of parking and the amount of infrastructure needed to do this type of development is very significant relative to the historic rehab, for example. And then also, you know, looking at a, you know, larger kind of industrial development where you may put a lot of infrastructure in to support this as well, $107,000 total and $6,000 per acre. So the summary here is, like I said, kind of consistent with other places that I've done this analysis, which is just to say, yes, these large commercial Walmarts and chore masters do produce good tax base and good taxes. And when you look at the per acre impacts or taxes generated, it's much lower than looking at existing acquisition rehabs and developing medium and high-density housing on existing sites. So I do think, the reason I started doing this analysis was because I worked in Brooklyn Park, and we had a project that, if you're familiar with 610, the Target Corporate. And right down the street, there was a 300-unit apartment building, and they generated the same tax base. But one, and one provided housing and one provided jobs, so not a bad thing. But when you look at this, people wanting, oh, we want this big Target Corporate because it's going to bring so many jobs and have so much tax base. And yet, even a project right down the street that provides housing for the people that need it there has a similar tax base impact. So that's why I started doing this analysis, because I wondered if it was consistent, and I was curious. And it seems as though there is an argument for tax base generation for multifamily housing and medium-density housing. All right, that concludes my presentation. I don't know, how long did I go? So I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you so much for having me today. And yeah, I'll just open it up.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate the presentation and enlightened me in a lot of different ways in looking at it. And one of the things that it showed that I really enjoyed was the high tax value of what Walmart and some of those bring in. But I understand your per acre, and I appreciate that a lot. I think the thing that comes to me right away is, where do we compare to other cities? And what I'd like to see is if you had the ability to show us, hey, where's Alexandria? Where's Brainerd? Where's some of these other ones? If there's somewhere we can get that, or if you can share that with us? Because what I want to see is, I want to see, what are we doing in our community compared to those communities? And are we successful in doing it? Are we way behind the times? And so we can either step up our zoning, step up our codes, or, hey, maybe we're on the right track. So that was my first question. If we could get that, I think that's the most helpful for me. You, most of your data early on was exclusive for Fergus Falls, right? When you had it in there? So you've done this in, like, Alec and stuff too? Is that, was that right?
Mayor, Councilmember Mortensen, we have, I've not done it in the, like, near-market comparisons. We have done it across Minnesota, looking at tax base and zoning, and, but not the two cities that you mentioned. We haven't done it there.
So we won't have a comparison to be able to do that at this time. But do you have some that are comparable? Or are these, all the, all the other cities you've done is $100,000, $150,000?
Actually, more the opposite where, well, I would say it's a good spread. Now you're going to challenge my memory, but we were in Winona. We've done Nashwauk. We did a full zoning code update for Nashwauk. And Kiwanis, we did just last week. I've been to Mountain Iron, Virginia, Minnesota. So I would say smaller mostly. Winona maybe is the exception where we looked at, I would say, maybe Winona is the closest comparable that we have to Fergus Falls in particular. But the, what I would say is that there's a lot of consistency in the demographics. These communities are similar demographics and similar trends demographically when you're looking at the kind of housing that's demanded. But different in terms of demand and growth. I would say Fergus is probably more likely to grow than some of these other places, maybe Winona being the exception. And then in terms of zoning, some of these cities have not looked at their zoning for a long, long time. You did that land use study, the West Lincoln Land Use Study, so that really shows that you're thinking about it. But then just incorporate it in the zoning would be the next step.
So my last question, then I'll stop, is we have a few areas in the town that have been built up probably in the 90s or different things where we're talking about smaller lot sizes, the setbacks were less. And so these houses are boom, 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 they're right in there. And when you go to some other communities, you see that as well, maybe up in Fargo-Morhead, and you look at a community and say, whoa, those houses are 10 feet apart or 5 feet apart. What is your concept, or what can you guide us on when you're talking about 43% of them are single-family homes in our city? What does that type of housing look like to you for those single-family homes? So I can get kind of an idea of what you're thinking is, are they the much smaller 1,200 square foot just really right together? Or what's, what are you seeing in other communities that are servicing that group?
That's a great question. So where are our housing trends going? We know where they've been. 100 years ago, it was, you know, historic, now historic houses on small lots. And that was probably because of infrastructure costs, but certainly transportation constraints too. 50 years ago, or 40 years ago, it was kind of more bigger lots with bigger houses for growing baby boomer families. And now it's, we, the demographics of our communities demand smaller units, smaller homes, whether that's single-family, townhomes, condos, or apartments. And generally speaking, if you're a single-person household, your income, particularly if you're a senior, can't really afford a new slab-on-grade patio home, which maybe everyone in this room wants, right? But, so that's what people want, but they can't necessarily afford that. There is a market for that because there are some people who can afford newer slab-on-grade patio homes, but most people are going to need smaller units than that so that they can afford them.
So is there, do you know of like a square footage? I mean, Mike said like 1,200 square feet. I mean, is there, is there kind of for that quote, "single home"? I mean, we have a site which we call the Stanton Property, which would fall into that category of, you know, economic infrastructure cost. It sits somewhat, not quite in the middle of town, but it's seven, eight acres, you know, easily developed from the infrastructure. You know, it would be ideal for, you know, a more dense housing, you know, which then, as you say, makes it more affordable. But, you know, is that kind of a, what square footage is it? And can it be a mix of kind of, you know, single-story and two-story homes?
So my recommendation to you is to rezone it for that now. That's what you, that's what you have authority over. If a developer came in and wanted to do that, and then they had to ask for the rezoning, especially if it's in an existing neighborhood, it would be a disaster. We've seen this time and time and time again. We're cool, market demanded, small lot or townhome projects just go down. So your role here is to say, this is what we want here, and we're going to get it ready. And then Clara and others can go recruit developers to do that. But the developer doesn't want to come in if the site isn't properly guided for that because of the heart, the heartache and the headache of getting that approval and all the money they have to put up upfront without even knowing if they have their zoning. But the point you're making is that, yes, small lot, single-family, and single-level townhomes, or even two-level townhomes are, it's called the missing middle, right? I don't know if you're planning nerds like me, but there's all this literature about missing middle. We have single-family and we have apartments, but what about this in-between? And that is what generally smaller households and aging households both need and want. And so anytime you can find sites to upzone for that type of housing, that's, that's your wheelhouse. And so that's what we can do to remove a barrier. There are still others. The cost of construction is a huge barrier. But if you have a site ready to go and you, and you say that to the development community, this is ready to go, this is what we want, it's already zoned, that's going to grease the skids for them to come in and actually do that.
Couple of things. Thank you for your presentation. When you're referring to Southwest Otter Tail, for example, needing 115 new homes, is Southwest Otter Tail-Fergus Falls proper? Or what exactly is the definition of the Southwest Otter Tail corridor?
I do not know. I can get you that information. It's in the housing study that Otter Tail County put out, but I don't, I don't have the exact boundaries of that.
Okay, that's okay. Then the next thing, one of the recommendations was reducing setbacks. Then the next thing, one of the recommendations was reducing setbacks for zone three and, or zone R3 and R4. Does that then make sense to look at the R1s and R2s? So the stair step is logical, so there's not such a big gap between R1 and R2 setbacks and R3 and R4? And so in essence, looking at all of them would be a logical approach?
Yes, absolutely. It is my observation based on the limited amount of research I've done, that there aren't a ton of opportunities for R1 and R2 infill, but certainly looking at reduced setbacks in all your districts is in order and can be done all at the same time on a use chart and things.
Okay. And then my final one is, we're talking about needing all of these new, new homes and recognizing the barrier to cost. Does it, in your mind, have you seen benefits? I know some larger cities are looking at in-law suites, nanny suites, multi-generational housing where there's more flexibility to allow for that. What has your experience been with that? And is that positive for the cities that have impact, have included that in their zoning?
Doing COTEX amendments for accessory dwelling units, which is the nerdy planner term for that, ADUs or accessory dwelling units, is very popular right now and is largely seen as a way to reduce a barrier. I do not see that having significant impact at scale, particularly given how difficult politically it is to get approved. Winona, I think, just spent a year on an accessory dwelling unit, going back to meeting after meeting because they wanted, this was an important value that they had, allowing multi-generational homes. And, and that's across cultural communities, across different income, you know, it's, it's a way to make your housing affordable, having multi-generations in one home. I do not see that having a significant impact at scale. Also, I do, the allowing duplexes, triplexes and quads in, in single family neighborhoods is another big trend in the planning. I do not see that having significant impact at scale. It reduces a barrier, but the cost to build an accessory dwelling unit on sewer, water and small utilities in your backyard is, is very expensive relative to finding an affordable smaller unit for that, for that person. So, you know, maybe for upper middle class, it can work too. Like, hey, yeah, we'll invest a couple hundred thousand dollars to build a house in our backyard. So reducing the zoning barrier isn't bad. I just don't, I think it's a lot of work and a lot of political heartburn for not a significant impact.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enlightening.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the contract with Visit Fergus Falls. As the Tax Levy Committee, obviously we've been lurking, you know, at obviously costs and income and revenues, et cetera, et cetera. And one of the things that we came across was that the Visit Fergus Falls contract that was written in 2021 on a three-year basis, and then it goes to annual review as, you know, effectively kind of was, it's just in that status as annual review. One of the things that we also looked at is that the, the city has the ability to obviously cover administrative costs of collecting the money from the, the state or the hotels slash the state and then passing it on to Visit Fergus Falls. And that currently is set at 3%. And as, as we all know, administrative costs are going up. And the statute does allow us to obviously push that fee up to 5%. And so that's kind of one of the things that we want to obviously negotiate with Visit Fergus Falls. And the other part is that we want to, you know, the statute, from the money collection perspective, allows us to, or states that it's to be used for obviously, you know, promoting Fergus Falls and the convention center. And we would like to make sure that there's a dedicated funding for the convention center. As we know, the Bigwood obviously is, the city is managing that currently. And, you know, it is a cost to the citizens of around 150,000. The city did, you know, previous, previous council asked, looked at a marketing plan and asked obviously Visit Fergus Falls if they would be prepared to contribute to a marketing plan, which they did not want to go down that road. But I think the Tax Levy Committee feel that it's very important that Visit Fergus Falls do promote the Bigwood as, as a specific item to help obviously get occupancy out there and rental. The, the way that the agreement is currently written, if we, obviously, if we do nothing, it will just renew as it is. And obviously we will be bound by the 3%, the 3% that we collect and obviously have not necessarily any input on where they utilize the funds that are collected. So in talking with the city attorney, his recommendation was that we officially terminate the contract because of the timing. In fact, it is actually the right time of year to do this and the right time per the contract. And, and in the meantime, obviously negotiate with Visit Fergus Falls on, on the fees and how, how they utilize the money. So today was kind of to bring this in front of obviously the council so that on Monday evening, we would be able to take obviously action in terms of terminating the contract and looking at negotiating a new contract with Visit Fergus Falls. I have spoken with Rolando, so Visit Fergus Falls is aware of the, of this discussion this morning. And Laura and I also, on behalf of the Tax Levy Committee, did also meet with Visit Fergus Falls last week and will continue to meet with them going forward. Laura, you got anything you wish to add?
I just want to add that I guess our intention is to have a new contract with them. Our intention is not to, you know, not have a contract moving forward with them. So I just want to make that clear. I mean, we do have an intention to move forward. It's the terms that we really need to look at. And it's important that we do have some sort of marketing plan for the Bigwood moving forward. And it was a year ago, I think, that we were sitting here with Leighton Media, looking at strategy. And we're a year later and we're kind of still sitting in that same seat. So I, I feel that this is our best option to be able to truly get some marketing done. Visit Fergus Falls did, over the summer, they did a six-week ad that went out and they had about 2,000 views on that ad. I don't know what conversion was as far as, you know, any calls that were coming into the Bigwood. But they did do a six-week marketing through Google Ads in that timeframe. And they do have a part-time person that is now going to be making some phone calls to previous businesses who have held events there to do some, you know, sort of recall and things like that. So that is in play. I don't want to say that they're, you know, not promoting, but we need to have a push here. So.
Laura?
Couple of things. Do we know the difference or can we on Monday night know the difference between the projection, between the 3% administrative fee and the 5% we're asking for? Is that something we can find out or do we have an idea?
We can probably answer that question now.
3,400.
About 3,400. Okay. So not...
3,400. 3,400.
And then, one of the things with the Bigwood, I think we, like Laura said, we need to figure out how to promote it to increase revenue out there. Is there any way, and I think it's been brought up here before, to look at some cost versus reward basis, I guess, in having some nonprofit rates available? Like, the site is very expensive to use compared to Wagyu or Legacy Hall, Center for the Arts, the schools, things like that. So we have less barriers for use out there that could increase revenue. Is there a way to look at that to make it so it can be used for more things and more approachable for family reunions, things like that where it's, you can't spend a thousand dollars to have a family reunion, but yet the building's sitting empty?
We, we did have conversation of that in Tax Levy, absolutely. So that's something that we have been discussing. And I know that Mr. Leighton also had voiced that same concern too.
And we have started that discussion with our staff that operates the Bigwood Center about, look at the pricing and what changes should we be making for exactly that? If you need it for an hour, for example, or a two-hour block?
Or a nonprofit rate or something.
Right. So we did bring that up and they're starting to look at that.
Is there a way to work with staff that's existing already to say, where are we spending our time? How much of existing staff time is being spent on marketing to try and kind of redirect some of the time into outreach to market the facility?
You're reading my mind because we did that at the same time.
Okay. There you go. You're good. Thank you.
And I, I just want to say, we don't have a whole lot of staff out there. So I, you know, I want to be fair with that, that we, right? We have one full-time person out there. So, yeah.
And again, that was something that we've also talked about with, with Visit Fergus Falls is like, how can city staff and Visit Fergus Falls work more collaboratively on, you know, as opposed to, I think we've had a little bit of a silo going on that the city is over here and Visit Fergus Falls is over here. And the two haven't necessarily been as, as in sync as, as they could be. And again, that's kind of one of the things that we want to try to, you know, get, get a more open dialogue going between the Bigwood and Visit Fergus Falls in terms of promoting, you know, that, so.
Not only that, Visit Fergus Falls is, Visit Fergus Falls, not heads and, and we've talked about this, heads and beds before and it kind of really irks me. I mean, we, we want our motel rooms full, I know that, but we also want to advertise that our city, and that's what that fund is actually for, and it hasn't been really used for that. And so going with the marketing of the Bigwood Event Center, but also our city, what goes on in our city, everything that goes on here. And they don't, I'm not trying to pick on anybody on that board, but it needs to be the city, Visit Fergus Falls, not just fill heads, heads and beds, you know, so.
I think that's the sentiment that's being shared.
I just want to make it all public. I hear a lot of people talk about that.
They, they did do a study, well, they worked with Malmstrom at the beginning of the year. And so the mission and vision has changed. I think the transition of that mission and vision is, been a little bit harder than maybe what some other members had anticipated. So, but yes, that's, has, the mission and vision has changed away from the heads and beds into really promoting the city.
Right.
They're getting there.
Good. Thank you.
Your Honor, I just want some clarification, I guess. First time I heard it, are you saying that as of right now, they collect, or we collect for them 3%, I think, from those hotels, right? Comes in or not?
No, our administrative fee is 3%.
Yeah.
And the tax is also 3%.
Yeah, oh, there's taxes also 3%.
Yeah, the tax is 3%. Did you say that the tax could go up to 5% or did you just say the administrative fee could go to 5%?
Administrative fee.
Hmm.
So with that, could somebody make a motion?
I will offer that.
Thank you, Laura.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Scott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, I mean, none, motion is approved. Everybody good to put it on the consent agenda? Yep, thank you. I think the next item is announcements. Obviously, October 20th, 4:30, a Port Authority meeting. 5:30, a city council meeting. That will, will, there'll be a closed meeting after that regarding property. And October 22nd, between 8 o'clock and 1 o'clock, City Hall, police and fire administrative offices will be closed for staff training. I think many other services will, will still be there, but it's for, you know, staff and then to promote that where you can. And October 29th, 7 o'clock, Committee of the Hall meeting. With that, we are adjourned.
Your Honor, Your Honor, one thing. Is there an economic business meeting with Dr. Lehman tomorrow?
Tomorrow, yes. Yep. In this room between 11 and 1 o'clock on how to utilize AI. So, yes, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
With that, the meeting is adjourned.